Good evening, excuse me, and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax, Income, and Finance Authority meeting of August, uh, excuse me, October 22nd, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmember Ball?
Present.
Councilmember Peacock?
Here.
Councilmember Montoya?
Here.
Councilmember Grant?
Here.
Councilmember Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Hinkle?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Dixon?
Here.
Mayor Heikle?
I am here. Thank you, ma'am. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm gonna read some, uh, rules of decorum, and, uh, I hope you'll listen to them, please. As your mayor, I want to reaffirm our commitment to upholding the rights guaranteed under the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. The right to free speech is fundamental to our democracy, and it is our responsibility to ensure that every citizen has the opportunity to express their opinions and be heard. City Council meetings are a crucial platform for public discourse, where residents can voice their thoughts, concerns, and ideas. We encourage participation, respectful debate, and active involvement from all members of our community. While we honor the right to free speech, we must also maintain an environment that is respectful, orderly, and conducive to productive discussion. Everyone attending can reasonably expect that the meeting will proceed in an environment of mutual respect among the elected officials, presenters, and audience that is free from disruptions. Consequently, disruptions, personal attacks, and behavior that detracts from the purpose of the meeting, including but not limited to cheers, boos, and applauding, will not be tolerated as they hinder the ability of others to exercise their rights. Subsection B of Section 2, uh, 2-107 of the City's Code of Ordinances states, "The presiding officer shall preserve decorum at all meetings and shall call upon the Sergeant of Arms to encourage and, or, excuse me, to enforce decorum and order." In furtherance of the mandate is Section 2, 107, "to preserve decorum at all meetings." I will enforce the meeting decorum rules displayed on the screen behind me. Persons who violate any of these rules will receive a warning for the first violation. Any subsequent violation may result in removal. My goal is to ensure that every voice can be heard while maintaining the integrity and decorum of our meetings. I ask for your cooperation and mutual respect as we continue to work together for the betterment of our city. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming Tuesday, October 22nd, is South Central Court-appointed Special Advocate Casa Day in the city of Norman. I need a moment, or, excuse me, a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second. A motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to acknowledge receipt passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, October 22nd, 2024, is South Central Court-appointed Special Advocate Casa Day in the city of Norman. Whereas the first South Central Court Advocate Volunteer Program in Oklahoma was started in October of 1984 by Judge Alan Couch in the city of Norman, and whereas October 22nd, 2024, is a special day recognizing the organization's 45th anniversary, and whereas a Casa volunteer is a trained community volunteer who is appointed by a judge to represent, watch over, and advocate for abused and neglected children, to help ensure that they do not get lost in the child welfare system or languish in foster care, and whereas a Casa volunteer makes recommendations to the court based on what he or she believes to be in the best interest of each child, and gives a child a voice and a hope, and whereas South Central Casa Day will inspire people in our community to come together to ensure the best interests of abused and neglected children are not overlooked, and whereas South Central Casa Day impacts lives by extending advocacy efforts and increased child well-being, including social, mental, emotional, physical, therapeutic, and educational safety needs of our children. Now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman of Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 22, 2024, is South Central Casa Day in the city of Norman, Oklahoma, and encourage the residents of our community to join me to recognize and bring awareness to the advocacy efforts of the court-appointed special advocates across from the community working to improve the lives of children. I'd like to recognize Sherri Marasco, if I may, please, to come up to the front.
I'll be really brief, just to keep you guys on schedule, but I just want to thank you for the acknowledgement of our Casa program, uh, 40 years within the community of Norman. We were founded as Cleveland County Casa, now we're South Central Casa, so the need has expanded, so we've expanded. But together, we can all, um, give children a permanent loving home with your help. So please consider, I know you are community servants, but please spread the word. We're always looking for volunteers, and we need everyone's help to help these children, which are just our future residents. So keep that in mind. Thank you kindly.
Item number two, a proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming November 3rd through November 9th, 2024, is Oklahoma Mobility Week in the city of Norman. I need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been acknowledged receipt passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read. A proclamation of the mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, proclaiming November 3rd through November 9th, 2024, is Oklahoma Mobility Week in the city of Norman. Whereas the city of Norman works every day, building an inclusive community to which includes providing multiple mobility options in Norman by getting people where they need to go, from work and school to medical appointments, grocery stores, and other essential services. And whereas mobility options available in Norman include, but are not limited to, fixed route bus service, paratransit service, on-demand service, e-scooters, sidewalks, bike lanes, multimodal pass, and Amtrak service, and whereas the mobility options available are critical to those who, that choose or unable to drive a motor vehicle, and whereas the mobility options provided benefit everyone in the city of Norman by reducing traffic and parking congestion, improving air quality, and making our city more equitable and accessible to all. Now therefore I, mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of November 3rd through, uh, 9th, 2024, is Oklahoma Mobility Week in the city of Norman, and invite members of the public to walk, bike, or use public transportation to celebrate and discover new ways to navigate Norman. Is Mr. Dent here in the audience?
Hey.
Would you come down, sir?
Yeah.
Well, just on the behalf of the ADA Committee, just wanna say thank you. Uh, thank you for the city of Norman, the mayor, and all of you for just keeping the notion that you do have people that live in Norman with disabilities, and we need help. And we appreciate all that we've done so far, and we have a lot more to go. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is council announcements, and I'll start at Ward 8.
Um, University of Oklahoma men's golf team's currently ranked number one in the country, so football fans have something to cheer for this fall. Um, they're playing in a golf tournament tomorrow. It's the last day at Oklahoma City Golf and Country Club, if you wanna get out and watch 'em. And also, uh, the men's head coach, Ryan Hibble, was just inducted into the NCAA Men's Coaching Hall of Fame. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you. Um, just want to remind everybody about this Friday, downtown Norman is Fall Fest, and, uh, Councilmember Grant may have some other things to say about it, but it's a really wonderful time, uh, in downtown Norman, especially if you have children. Um, the street gets closed down, the businesses give out candy, and everybody in Norman is welcome to attend. And last year, it was thousands and thousands of kids. It was wall-to-wall. I could hardly get through it. But they have bounce houses, and you get to see all the, you get to meet all the business owners, and it's a really wonderful time. So I would encourage everybody to attend that, and it's free. Um, also, there is a community conversation on, uh, October 28th at 6:00 PM, um, at the First United Methodist Church about food security and community gardens. Uh, so I know Evan will be excited about that one. Uh, but food security is a real, uh, issue, and our food pantries in Norman are constantly being restocked by volunteers that donate their time and money and food to do that, but there is a real need for that. And so that's a pretty good conversation for anybody interested in that. Um, and I also want to congratulate the Citizens Academy, uh, graduates yesterday. The mayor and I and Councilmember Grant were here. Uh, and, um, if you're ever interested in getting an inside look about how the city of Norman operates, as in all the city departments, the water treatment plant, the waste, uh, water reclamation plant, the police department, the fire department, um, IT, all of those things, um, you can sign up to be a member or to participate in the Norman Citizens Academy. Um, I think we do it once a year, and, um, it's a great opportunity. Again, I think it's 12 or 13 weeks, and each week for a couple hours, you get to go visit a city department and learn about what they do, and you get to meet the city employees that, um, are the ones who make this city operate every single day. So that's a great opportunity, and you can sign up on the city of Norman website. Um, also wanted to acknowledge, um, CCFI is moving, or is going to be using the Reeves Center in Ward 7, uh, for the new boys and girls, well, moving the Boys and Girls Club activities there. Um, the Reeves Center is a building at Reeves Park that was built in the mid-1970s as a teen center. Um, it's been a gardening center, it's been, uh, ballet and dance classes, it's been all sorts of stuff throughout the years. I've held, uh, numerous Ward 7, uh, meetings there, um, and now it will get an opportunity to be used for the Boys and Girls Club through CCFI. So I'm really excited to see them move into that space and have Reeves Park around them to be able to use, along with the new softball stadium across the street and stuff like that. So, um, excited for that. And then also wanted to, uh, make sure everybody knows that the Norman Route, Fixed Route Bus System, Route 112, is changing to 30-minute service from an hour to 30-minute service starting on the 27th. And so, one of the goals of the fixed route system, um, and our long-range plans is to make all of the routes run on 30-minute intervals, so you're not having to wait an hour and wait for the next bus to come back.
Miss, excuse me, you must have missed my memo.
It is exciting, though. I'm, uh, so, and then the last thing, I do just want to encourage everybody to, um, get out and vote next two, or two weeks from tonight, um, uh, two weeks from today, but also, um, early voting. And I just saw today that early voting has been moved to the mall. So that will be starting on October 30th, and then October 31st, November 1st, and November 2nd is early voting, if you're interested or need to do that. And again, that'll be at the mall. So, um, just encourage everybody to please get out and exercise your right to vote, um, here in Norman. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Thank you, sir. Uh, good evening, Norman. I also wanted to give, uh, some information about the Center for Children and Families. They will be hosting the Infant Crisis Services, it's a tongue-twister, Baby Mobile, on Monday, October 28th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Um, no appointment is required for this, and, uh, the services are offered on a as-needed basis. Um, the children must, don't have to be present. It starts at age three, uh, be able to get one week's worth of diapers or formula and food. So lots of good opportunities there for families in need. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember?
No announcements this week?
Thank you, sir. Councilmember?
Yes. Uh, good evening, Ward 4, and city of Norman. Thank you to everybody who is out here tonight and tuning in. Um, as was alluded to by Councilmember Holman, I would just like to echo a congratulations to our graduates of the 2024 Citizens Academy class. Um, afterwards, I took a walk with one of, uh, the people who was taking that and saw that a family who had come to celebrate, uh, their kid who had done it, um, at our Tamashi ramen, which just opened down the way. So, you know, obviously pretty important to the people who went through the process. Um, as Councilmember Holman said, uh, it, you will learn about all the city's, um, departments, staff, uh, something I appreciated from what one of the City's Academy graduates said last night was that the city runs lean, um, seeing that, you know, we have staff doing multiple jobs. Uh, I think it's a great course if you wanted to run for city council. Um, I also think, uh, you would be well-served to do some boards and commissions on top of that. Uh, the class runs 13, 14 weeks, depending on scheduling. It opens up in July, and it caps at 25. I got asked since I posted about it, uh, the other day, how did people get in? You're just gonna have to wait till next July and be real quick to sign up. Um, on that note, I would like to, uh, thank the following five Ward 4 Boards and Commissions reappointees. Um, for Environmental Control and Advisory Board, um, thank you to Natalie Roker, Ward 4, Historic District Commission. We have Tabor Halford and Mitch Baroff. For Norman Election Commission, it's Ty Hardeman, and Norman Housing Authority Peggy Stockwell. And, uh, since Councilmember Holman already talked about Fall Fest, the only thing I'll add to that is that Oscillator Press, also on Main Street, will do an impromptu parade, uh, with anybody who's made masks. They're making masks Wednesday night, 6:00 to 9:00 PM at Oscillator Press. For Friday night, doing an impromptu parade. Thank you.
Councilmember?
Good evening, Ward 3, in Norman, Oklahoma. I hope this evening finds you all well. Just a couple of calendar items. We have two weeks from tonight. It's a pretty important election date, and Councilmember Holman alluded to, um, early voting. And then on November 9th, the, the city of Norman, in partnership with United Electronics Recycling, are hosting an electronics waste recycling event from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Reeves Park located at 2501 Jenkins Avenue. And then, November 15th, one of my favorite days in the city, is where the Parks and Rec are giving away free trees. And that is on, it starts at 9:00 AM, and it is at Griffin Community Park, 101 East Robinson. So please do not arrive before 8:00 AM to allow staff plenty of time to get set up. And, um, for those of you here and watching online, thank you all for being here.
Sir?
Thank you. Uh, I was also gonna mention the Right Tree, Right Place Tree giveaway, so thank you, Councilmember Montoya, for bringing that up. But other than that, no announcements.
Councilmember?
Um, I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Taylor, Mr. Surs, Public Works, our embark, uh, bus system. Um, I was helping an individual get their social security benefits today at the officer and more, and our bus here in Norman actually goes to the Social Security Office and more. It goes to Oklahoma City. It's a free service. It's an amazing service, and it's one that I, I'm very proud, because where I come from, you walk or you, you walk or you drive. And being here in Norman and seeing the walkability and the public transportation that we have, it's, it's a blessing, and it, it really helps people. So I'm very proud of that. Um, we can't figure out how to get to our east side library with our bus, but, you know, we can get everywhere else. So I'm, I'm happy for that. Um, and the last thing, uh, as all, as was already mentioned, uh, Fall Fest downtown, but between now and Halloween, I think my kids have seven different truck-or-treats slash Main Streets slash Noble and everywhere else. So, uh, I know there's quite a few churches in Moore. I know numerous churches here in Norman, uh, in Noble. Uh, probably shouldn't be mentioning them. I'm pretty sure they bought all their Halloween candy here in Norman, though, so, and since they're churches, it's not gonna affect us any. Um, so, but get out, have a great time, be safe, and can't wait to see everybody's Christmas decorations on November 1st. So...
One thing that I have is, is joining with you guys in, in Citizens Academy and, and lauding that that's an excellent thing that happens, and it does, it is 13 weeks once a year. And, and that's a hard slog for somebody. But one of the things that, that was most mentioned to me was how much our employees love working at the city of Norman, most of the time. And so, as I sit down, and I think about things that, that have happened over the last year, uh, we have a lot of people that write grants, and getting grant money, of course, like any other organization, is kind of free money. Mr. Taylor Johnson and Mr. Jason Huff from the Transit Department, uh, sat down and earned us $11,874,645 in grant money. And that's what keeps the bus going. That's what keeps those kinds of things going. Michelle Ladenbach, uh, and then Michelle Chow, uh, they earned $423,642 to do environmental work here in Norman. It's stuff that you didn't, you didn't have to pay for. Mr. Nathan Maidenwald, uh, who's with the Utilities Department, earned $8,350,000 in that. That's a total of, uh, $20,652,87 that those employees earned that we didn't have to take out of tax money. I'd like, uh, if you would, join me with a round of applause for those employees. Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda through the City Council by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged in one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval of all council members, then that item will be heard in regular order. Staff recommends that Item 3 through Item 16 be placed on the Consent Docket. I need a motion to place Items 3 through 16 on the Consent Docket?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to place Items 3 through 16 on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been acknowledged receipt passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve the Consent Docket.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Are there any comments from council regarding the Consent Docket? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to approve the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number 17, Ordnance 02425 slash four, uh, excuse me, Tac 4, on second and final reading, an ordinance granting special use for an automobile service station in the C1 Local Commercial District for property located at 3301 Glasson Boulevard. I need a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Was that a second? Thank you, sir. Uh, is there a representative from the applicant? Would you come up here in front, sir? Do you have a presentation to make?
Sir.
No, sir? All right. Do you wanna run through that? Uh, well, I guess...
There are some slides loaded from Planning Commission, if you wanna just run through those right quick.
Okay.
The clicker is on the left. Yep, you do the left side.
Just run through those. Sorry. My name is Scott Darham with Olson, uh, representing the applicant Brakes Plus. Um, looking to get a...
You'll need to speak right into...
Looking to get the conditional use of, uh, the automotive, uh, service business approved for this site. And, uh, you can see the subject tract off of Glasson Boulevard here. It is, um, next door to, uh, I believe, a Dunkin' Donuts, uh, that's currently there. This is, like, the aerial view of that site. We, we intend to, um, use that existing drive as shared access. View across the street and vacant lot. Um, and I believe there's our, uh, proposed site plan, um, that we have for this facility. So, I think, and our elevations for materials and, um, whatnot. And that, there you go.
Questions from council? Questions from council? Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. With the number of parking spaces, the twenty-five, is that how many the business believes that they need?
That is.
So we don't require a minimum anymore?
Correct. That is a corporate request for each site that we start.
Okay.
It's twenty-five spaces.
This may be a question for staff, but there was a question in the pre-development about, had a concern about inadequate detention on this site, and they thought it should be addressed prior to adding development on the parcel. So I don't know if you want to go into a little detail about how stormwater runoff will be managed on this site and how that works with the other developments that are around it.
Correct. If I may, go back to the aerial view. As you might see, what may look like a concrete trickle channel is what we call it. In the back there, that's part of a detention area for a regional detention for this platted development. So the detention has been considered in previous design, and we intend to use that same detention area.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions.
Councilmember Mull?
That was actually my question. You went through all the boards and all the planning and got unanimous from everybody. So, and the only neighbor that had a concern, looks like you addressed it, so thank you.
Thank you.
It worked out well. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, this is an opportunity, you'd like to go ahead and have a seat.
Thank you.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on this item. Remarks should be directed to council only. Once public comments have been concluded, council may choose to respond to some of your questions. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have Ben Plummer.
Mr. Plummer?
Ben Plummer, Ward Four. So my concern, again, is with the detention. This is a gas station, if I'm not mistaken, right next to a pond that drains into, what, Lake Thunderbird eventually?
It's actually an automotive service station, more than it is a gasoline station. It does have cars, and it does have.
So there's no underground storage for gas?
Not to the best of my knowledge. None.
Okay. All right. And just some general comments, is that we should take our water quality much more seriously.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to say that my question was answered by the gentleman as far as water. I, too, was not sure what kind of automotive facility this was, but it is extremely important to all citizens of Norman to protect our water resources. Oklahoma City's water source is drying up. They're having to pull water from Canton to put into Hefner as we speak, because there's not enough water for the City of Oklahoma City. I would hate for Norman to have issues with its water quality, and I implore you to be watchful for that. Thank you.
Richard McCown? Okay. Then that would be all.
Orders to adopt the ordinance on second reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading. Have a motion and second. Motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
Our votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Item number eighteen, a resolution of the Council of the City of Norman requesting the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority to improve and construct facilities in the vicinity of the City of Norman along the East-West Connector through its Access Oklahoma program. I'll entertain a motion to adopt, reject, amend, or postpone the resolution.
I would like to motion to postpone this item so that we may have a study session next Tuesday with OTA present, so that they can answer questions on the record from council members as well as members of the audience.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A lot of seconds. Want to take public speak? All right. This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Do we have anybody?
Since this item was, sorry. Since the postponement was previously, obviously, on the agenda for you to sign up for, we will just take open comments. It is limited to motion to postpone only. So anybody that wishes to speak, come on up. We have three minutes.
Well, here we are again, folks kicking that can down the road. You know, I get really tired of business not being done in the guise of, well, we need to look at this further. I think the citizen deserves your attention and your ability to do your jobs. That's all I have to say.
Elizabeth Forman, Ward Six. Councilmember Peacock, I appreciate your postponement, and you did give a date for a study session, but is there a way that the public can be given a date certain of when this vote would come? Because it does take a lot for us to come out.
That'd be the twenty-seventh.
The twenty?
Seven.
The twenty, well, the actual vote.
Yeah.
Yes, the twelfth, the twenty-sixth, because the twenty-sixth would be Thanksgiving week. And do you?
November twelfth, if that's the date certain.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, thank you for that motion, although I was hoping it would be a motion to reject the zombie resolution that keeps coming back and back and back. Oh, Amy Serrato, Ward Five. I'm concerned about the study session with the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, because after working with the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority for the last two and a half years, they never tell me the truth, ever, until I have to have the Attorney General go levy opinions against what they've been doing. And so for you to sit in a room with the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority next week and listen to Joa Kelly tell you that, oh, city, we're gonna do everything we want in that resolution, we're gonna, it's not gonna cost you a dime. They're lying, and they continuously lie. And so I would like, somehow, if you're gonna vote on this postponement and not a rejection outright, that the city residents, someone like me, who's been involved with the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, can ask them point-blank questions. Because that's the only reason, that's the only way we're gonna get, and what I want you to know is that, in seventy-seven years, the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority has never done anything that the cities have asked in a resolution. Do you know why? Because it's not legally enforceable. You need a contract with the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, not a resolution. Why are we messing around with this resolution with a bunch of wish lists that the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority is laughing at us about? Oh, we're not gonna use the Uniform Relocation Act. We're not gonna give them a tax break. We're not gonna give them a mortgage break. And you have a city manager who is continuously working with the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority to bring this back to you. I need it to be rejected. We don't want to do a resolution. If you want something, do a contract, okay? So that's the only way we're gonna get anything. The City of Norman is gonna be bowled over. You're losing all your negotiating power with this resolution.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
I'm gonna ask everybody to clear, if you keep on clapping. It is not decorum that we want to have here, and that's why I read that to begin with. The clapping, you can do all you want on the outside, but these people have to be able to speak. And although they may agree with you or not agree with you, they have to be able to speak without the pressure of you guys clapping or not clapping for them. Would you go ahead, please, sir?
Dave Moore, Ward Three and Ward Five. This subject and issue has been studied to death for twenty-five years. I was there twenty-five years ago when the first study session started, the major investment study, where four state agencies were studying it, all at the same time. You know what their conclusion was? The toll roads are a bad idea. Then it was studied even more later. It's been studied just recently, a couple of years ago. It's been studied and studied and studied. The City Council had their study session with the OTA two years ago. You know what the study session was like? Some of you guys were there. It was just a big endless line of, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, don't know the answer to that question, I don't know, beats me. That's what it was like. Joa Kelly said, I don't know. I think it was fifteen or sixteen times. So there are studies available that you can look at now. This issue has been studied to death. It's time to get this thing voted on and get it down the road. Thanks.
Tassie Hirschfeld, Ward Five. I want to thank you for introducing the idea of postponement, but I'm going to tell you that you are not postponing it nearly long enough. My prepared remarks I have brought in began with a plea to postpone until the results of the investigative audit are released, and my reasons for this are significant. One, in my review of your internal staff emails, I saw, again, this was over two hundred pages, a woeful ignorance on the part of your city manager about what an investigative audit is, and a complete dismissal of the potential seriousness or criminal activity that could be uncovered in the findings. When Epic Charter Schools was undergoing its investigative audit, it resulted in criminal racketeering charges, conspiracy charges, and money laundering. Have you prepared for that eventuality of the Turnpike Authority audit? My guess is no, because, again, in reading two hundred pages of emails, I saw nothing but enthusiasm expressed from your city staff about.
Are you asking us to postpone or not?
Indefinitely, until the results of the investigative audit are released.
Thank you, ma'am.
And that is uncertain, but that will give you the knowledge that you need to move forward and how to move forward, and, most importantly, who you're dealing with. Because those of us who have been studying the OTA and its activities for years now have found over and over again evidence of serious wrongdoing, problems with real estate acquisition, real estate disposition, very questionable bond deals, and on and on and on. So we need an expert opinion on this before we decide to be their friend. And the second and last point I will make is that last week, over eleven thousand citizens sent a big vote of no confidence to the City Council for its aggressive actions.
Ma'am, that is not the question.
It is.
The question is.
Relevant to the question, because this vote of no confidence extends to this issue even more profoundly, in that if we were to have an initiative petition on this issue, I think the results would be quite overwhelming. If you want to regain the trust of citizens, maybe pull back and put the brakes on major decisions that appear to be beneficial to specific real estate developers and detrimental to the citizens. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ready? Where is Deputy Chief? Deputy Chief? He's busy.
I think he just stepped out.
Next time, I'm gonna clear the gallery. Sir, would you speak, please?
Steve Ellis, Ward Four. I want to suggest that I would prefer that you guys just vote this resolution down. I think it's better to postpone it, so I guess that technically makes me an advocate of the amendment. But I also think it would be better if the amendment were amended in order to make this a public hearing with the OTA rather than just a City Council study session, because, as we've heard before, there's a lot of distrust about the OTA, and that distrust has been earned. And just having them talk to you guys is probably not gonna be sufficient in order to get the citizens of Norman to have a full discussion on this issue. One of the things I'll bring up in miscellaneous is the way I think these general OTA issues have been mishandled, but I think it's important that if you're going to wait for more information, that you include information from a variety of perspectives, including the people who are worried about the watershed, including the people who are worried about their homes, including the people who are worried about the anti-strong-town sort of development that a turnpike would create. So I suggest to you, if you're not willing to go any further, I would vote yes on this, but it would be better if you either decided to reject outright or if you decided to postpone this indefinitely until we can get a clear, public participation discussion about this issue, which we have not had yet. I think that's important.
I just want to address Mr. Ellis's comments real quick. That is actually the exact intent of the motion. I said it was to address councilmember's comments, but also questions from the public as well, so thank you.
If there's one thing you can count on with the OTA, it's broken promises. Oklahoma County and Hera have not received one square inch of the right-of-way that was contractually agreed upon. Norman's 2022 resolution requests that, quote, "The OTA should conduct an extensive study of its promised construction or proposed construction and its impact on the Lake Thunderbird watershed prior to moving forward on any plans for construction, and to share the results of such study publicly and with the City of Norman." The OTA has not honored this request. Why would we assume they will honor a request in this current resolution? In August, I submitted a FOIA to the Army Corps Headquarters in Washington, D.C., requesting communications between the OTA and the Corps regarding permitting for the access program. I received the following information. April 12th, 2024, meeting agenda between Garver, Poe, and the Army Corps of Engineers.
Ms. Wilson, would you please speak to the postponement or not the postponement?
Yes, I'm asking you to postpone indefinitely. So, April 12th, 2024, meeting agenda between Garver, Poe, and the Army Corps. Wetland-approved jurisdictional determinations are getting elevated to the EPA headquarters and taking significant time to complete. The Corps can move forward without AJDs, and it's preferable to circumvent AJDs for wetlands, if possible. The meeting was held with the Army Corps of Engineers from the Tulsa office on July 2nd, 2024. Minutes received read as follows: East-West Connector, Bridge over Canadian River, and Lost Creek. The Corps confirmed there will be no 404 permit required for this crossing. Follow-up email from the Corps to OTA representatives. This project has been entered into ORM as SWT-2024-00350. Again, no communication with Norman regarding the environmental permits. Do you agree the OTA should be exempt from adherence to the 404 permit, which refers to the Clean Waters Act of the U.S.? Not only do they refuse to honor agreements with cities and counties, they also fail to follow through with their contracts with the consulting engineering firms they're hired to design Access Oklahoma. If you all would please check your emails, there is an email that has been forwarded to you with some insider tip information about how they intend to move forward with the City of Norman. I think that's some information you guys need to have. So I would just ask you to please postpone indefinitely, and I look forward to the public being able to ask the OTA some of these direct questions, because we're getting no answers. So thank you all for your time.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Stevens, Ward Five, and I'm agreeing with the postponing indefinitely. I just want to say, when you do bring OTA in to ask them questions, please make sure that everybody has equal time to speak. It seems like in the past, I've seen that, you know, OTA's given kind of just however much time they need, and then everybody else is limited. And so please make sure it's equal, and that it is a true, open discussion. I think we need that, so thank you.
More for them to finish.
More for them to finish.
Paul Wilson, Ward One. Sorry, guys, I didn't get the red shirt memo. First time in three months I didn't wear a red shirt to city council, and I guess I should have. I don't mind the postponement. But you stated that you were going to have him in a study session. Last time I checked, the public was not allowed to make public comments or ask questions at a study session. So instead of postponing it for a study session, just like you did with the TIF, make them sit right there. Bring OTA right there. Let the public get up here and talk and ask them questions. And I agree, no resolution, a contract, a legally binding contract between the city of Norman to make sure that what they promise is what they deliver. Because the last thing we want them to do is get a resolution? Great, cool. We're going to make all these promises. 10 years down the line, none of them are there. And unlike on certain things, this is not something Norman needs. I recently spent a weekend down in Dallas, and I've seen what toll roads can do. Oh, my God. And don't take this the wrong way, but OTA has never paid off one single toll road in the state of Oklahoma. And that is what they promised when they first started building, is once they were paid off, they'd be turned over to the state. What do they do? When it gets close, they refinance it.
Just remind you that the discussion is to the motion on the floor to postpone only.
Okay. Thank you. I'm Cheryl Hoggett, Ward Five. And I do agree that it needs to be postponed indefinitely, because there's a lot of things I'm concerned about that needs to be looked into further. There are two items on the resolution that could possibly even be construed as illegal for the OTA to even agree to. State Statute 69714 reads in part, "The authority is hereby limited in its power to acquire property to the acquisition of property which is necessary to the construction and operation of the turnpike." So how is acquiring land, for number eight, a 10-foot off-street bike lane on 36th Avenue Northwest, north to city limits, and extending south a full mile, the Franklin wrote, from the turnpike and the 10-foot-wide multimodal path along the east-west corridor? How is that necessary to the construction and operation of the turnpike? This sounds to be a fake promise or an opportunity for a legal challenge. In reality, how is the construction of the surface roads necessary for the construction and operation of the turnpike? Maybe necessary for private development, but not for the turnpike. Agreeing with several people, the OTA does make promises that they know that they're not going to keep or they can't keep. It's been proven time and time again, and they do not act in good faith. One more thought, and this goes along with what Amy said. If it is crucial, and it is, that we have language to protect stormwater quantity and quality, Lake Thunderbird and its tributaries, and the requirement for obtaining state, federal, and local permits, then it should be strongly written into city code as an ordinance rather than a resolution. The resolution is an act that expresses the city's opinion on a matter and is not legally binding. And this other part is not about postponing, so I won't read it. I do think it should be postponed indefinitely until we have a lot more information.
Hello, I'm Mary Boren, and I live in Ward Six in Royal Oaks. I'm here to support the motion to postpone indefinitely. I know that some of you are really having a hard time feeling confident about making decisions regarding resolutions like this. With the $5 billion transportation project that could take away the 600 families' homes, we should be confident, you should be confident, on making a decision around that. The problem is, is that the access to information that you need takes a long time to get. We've been at this for two years. And even in my seat at the state Capitol, it has taken a daily effort to get straight answers. So take all the time you need to get the confidence that we deserve you to have. Because your confidence is the only way to hold this organization accountable. And if you're going to take away, and if your vote to coordinate ends up taking away homes, then you need to be able to tell the homeowners what the city of Norman got for that sacrifice. And unless you study this further, you're not going to have the confidence to be able to tell them that. And it turns into just another cronyistic deal where people had their arms twisted politically to be forced into a decision that none of you all want to make. And I think that kind of confidence, that kind of study session is right down the middle of what the culture of Norman is about. We have a room full of people who sit here every, who go to work every day, and they do peer-reviewed PhD and master's-level work. And they sit on panels to make sure that people have their ducks in a row. And maybe's and might could haves, and don't worry your pretty little head about it, doesn't work in their world. It's data and evidence. And you all deserve that, because you represent people, but that's their walk of life every day. So I support an indefinite amount of time for you to study it until you're confident in whatever answer that you give the people of Norman.
Hello, my name is Jesse Matlock, resident of lovely Ward Five. And I am indefinitely in favor of postponing it. Hashtag indefinitely. You know, we were all here together in this room a few weeks ago when unanimously, including the mayor and the whole council, y'all said, yeah, we don't want this resolution. So I'm really confused as to why we're here. Yeah, take all the time you need. Have your study session. Maybe ask yourself why certain city staff members, you know, twisted your arm to get you to reconsider this resolution, because y'all already voted no. So I am in favor of postponing it indefinitely. That's really all I have to say. Thank you.
My name's Tanner Nair. I am a Ward Six homeowner and a Ward Five property owner on the east-west connector. If y'all don't know, I'm the one who wrote you the thank you cards two weeks ago for rejecting this thing. And so I really support you taking the time to make the right decision. This is, I don't want to be on y'all's side. That would stink to be over there, having to deal with this, knowing the weight of this decision. And so I am glad you're taking your time. I'd rather you take even more time and wait for that state audit like Tassie asked. Let us find out the truth from the state auditor before we make any decisions for the city. Thank you.
Marguerite Larson, Ward Six. I am deeply concerned that this even came up again. So I do not know why the city manager put this on the agenda. Or the mayor, or whoever put it on the agenda, when this is already voted down as a no. My deepest concern is that we don't have all the facts. I support postponing this indefinitely. I would actually just like to have it all, not even have it a discussion again, but definitely postpone indefinitely and bring the citizens in here, have a Q and A, a one-on-one. And if it takes five and a half hours, then it takes five and a half hours. We have been there before. So I just think that you should definitely have an indefinite postponement. Thank you.
Richard McCowen, Ward Eight. Just pointed out to me that very few people spoke in favor of this. In fact, no one was here to speak in favor of it when it was voted down a couple of weeks ago. I'm very much in favor of you postponing this because a group of you, a group of us that you all appointed to overhaul and update our comprehensive land use plan have spent more than a year working on the growth plan of Norman. And we were expecting to be able to put certain aspects of retail and multifamily along this turnpike route that none of us asked for, none of us wanted. But since it's here, and we were expecting that it would come with the same kind of infrastructure that it has in Oklahoma City, that that would accommodate that growth. We've been working very hard as the AIM-Norman Steering Committee to update those maps. In fact, it took four special meetings of a subgroup to go back and rework everything. It's getting all of the facts together, both from the OTA, but also to be able to get you guys the latest draft of the land use plan to try and mesh these pieces of the puzzle together to see how they actually impact Norman's future and its ability to collect sales tax and compete within the region feels pretty important. And a lot of moving parts here and a lot of information that isn't currently available. And I think a postponement would be really helpful. Thanks.
Hello, Howard Baer from Ward Four and Vice Chair of Red Earth Group Sierra Club. We would like you to postpone indefinitely. But if you do implement the study group, we would like the city council to adopt a bigger picture where Norman should be focused on building a progressive vision for a sustainable future based on quality of life and the environment and not just on growth in the long term. The issue of global warming is becoming more and more important, and there's climate catastrophes that are rapidly increasing, weekly or monthly. And concrete production is one of the biggest sources of CO2. Every molecule of calcium carbonate turns into calcium oxide or lime rock plus CO2. It's a huge emitter of CO2. There's a huge runoff problem. Concrete's a big absorber of sunlight. It's better to have vegetation to sequester the carbon. And the turnpike would encourage more driving. Whereas we'd like you to push better train service, perhaps to OKC, better public transportation, more bike paths. And the turnpike would disrupt people and animals inhabiting the east side of Norman.
Hello, my name's Pam Post, and I'm from Ward Five. You all know that. I've been here before, speaking to you again about this OTA demanded resolution. I want to appreciate all of you have maintained open thoughts and ideas and want to get answers to pertinent questions. But I am disappointed in the fact that this is being kicked down the road again. But I will say, I am in favor of postponing this indefinitely until we do a study session with the OTA that the citizens are fully involved in. But I want to remind you that the last time OTA was invited to speak to the citizens of Norman, they did not show up. Instead, they sent their so-called representatives, Poe and Associates. So the question I have, are the people that are going to come and do this study session actually going to be OTA employees? Or is it going to be Poe and Associates? Good question. I don't know. Currently, there is no contract with the OTA. An OTA breach of contract with them would have to be settled in district court. Yet the council needs to remember that the Supreme Court says that they have original jurisdiction on the OTA and that if OTA is not satisfied with an answer that comes out of district court, they will take it to the Supreme Court, who is questionable on their rulings in favor of the citizens and always tend to rule in favor of the OTA. Why is there not a contract at this time? And here's why. Why is this resolution important? The city manager stated a resolution would allow them to finish construction drawings to 100%. Since the city manager believes that this statement is true, then why do several council members believe that there is no way to stop the OTA? Apparently, OTA was stopped eight weeks ago, and we're wanting to reopen this and re-talk about it. I continue to urge you all to vote no against any resolution, to go straight to a contract. Get your answers questions, your questions to your answers. Get the answers to your questions that you want asked. Yeah. And let the citizens continue their full participation in this. I appreciate you all letting me come and speak again. And I will want to say this. I have enjoyed meeting with you all and speaking with you and throwing around and doing conversations. This is what democracy is about, giving the citizens the time to speak. Thank you all very much. Have a nice evening.
Tracy Williamson, Ward, longtime resident of Ward Five. Well, I had a whole different speech prepared, so I'm a little. But I will speak to the postponement. I think if you're going to postpone, it should be done indefinitely. I'm rather curious why this even came up again, even if we have a person in our midst who is, you know, in league with OTA, why we are not putting that person in timeout and saying, look, we don't want anything from the OTA. We've already voted on that. So what, I'm curious as to what you think you're going to hear when you have this meeting with the OTA. Do we not already know who they are and what they're going to tell you? Oh, yeah, we'll do, we'll do, and we're going to make this. It's, the fact is, OTA needs these turnpikes. We don't. The state of Oklahoma doesn't. We know why they need them, their poor business model. As it said, they haven't paid off one toll road. But they will tell you, personally, I don't think any resolution or any contract should be made. I would be in favor of just thumbing my nose at them. And if they are all so powerful, why is it they need something in writing from you? Why aren't they just going ahead and steamrolling right over us? Because they need something from you that says, we'll work with you. Apparently, that seems to be the case. Logic would tell me that. I'm not a lawyer. But they're going to tell you everything you want to hear and talk you into something, to making some agreement with them. I am of the thought that the less we get from them, we don't want, do you not think they're going to give us access access to their monster roads? They want that. They've got to have that to help their developer friends and for you to pay their tolls. They want you on their roads. Do we not think they're going to give us access to their road? Of course they are. So, but the less access we get or whatever their tactic they're using to threaten us takes more land. If we can save one home, it's worth telling them. You know, if they're going to steamroll right over us, give them the least that you can. No contract, no resolution. Just, you bullies, do what you have the power to do and then get out of our city. So I say postpone indefinitely just because more things are coming down the pike, so to speak. So, thanks, guys. I know your job is difficult, but please remember what you're dealing with, because they're not honest. And they're going to tell you what you want to hear. Thanks, council.
Good evening. I'm Randy Carter. I'm from Ward Five. First of all, I got to say, I don't envy you all sitting up there on the dais. I know this is a tough job. This is a very serious issue, and there's lots of information going on around. And I, I don't envy you. I don't, I couldn't sit up there and do this. So I congratulate you for taking the time to do that. We do appreciate that. I do definitely think that we should postpone the resolution. And I appreciate the motion to do that. I have a little issue with the speedy study session that you've proposed. I'm sure that could be amended if you so desire. I don't know how it exactly works. I was at the study session just a week ago. And I got to tell you, I- I was at the study session just a week ago, and I gotta tell you, I, you all called it a study session. To me, it was nothing but a propaganda parade. And your city manager piled on. I, I was, I was a little bit surprised that he called on a developer to get up and speak about the access roads.
Randy, keep to the topic, please.
I, I am, yes, sir. The topic is the study session, and I have issues with the study session, how it might be done, and I think we have, we have studied this turnpike situation for, it's been almost a full-time job for many of our people. We know a lot of things about the Turnpike Authority that you all need to know when you're making this decision, and to have a study session that is just with the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority is not going to tell you the whole story. And I think that if you postpone it, and I recommend that you postpone it, appreciate that, I think that you should amend the resolution to set a further down-the-road date for a study session and to include other opinions, other points of view, other information in that study session, so you can have the full story. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Hi, my name is Leslie Noble. I'm from Ward 3. I'm in favor of, do I sound, I guess I sound okay. I'm in favor of postponing. My comments are about the last time that I was able to come and have the opportunity to ask questions about the Arena Tiff. The way it was set up, I had either two or three minutes. I read off a list of questions, and the city staff and the attorney who were answering my questions were put in the awkward situation of trying to pick out a couple of relevant questions that they did address, and then I think some questions, like in that kind of format, kind of got skipped over. Some of my questions may have come across as a rhetorical question, but I did not mean them to be a rhetorical question. So I'm just asking that there be some thought into how questions are able to be asked, because I, I thought there were some problems with that format, but I don't know if there's a better way or not. So thank you very much.
Trey Kirby, Ward 5. I would like to, you know, put it off indefinitely. For one, it should go until after the next election, and I'm talking about the 2025 election, when, what, 1, 3, 5, 7, the mayor are all up for reelection. I've seen how fast everybody got 11,000 signatures. So if you're so confident in what you're doing, allowing this to come forward again in an insubordinate type of way after the people have spoken, I don't get, I have to come up and say who I am and where I'm from, but then in that piece of paper that y'all put out on the resolution, it said somebody just called up and, you know, wanted to talk about it because they wanted the exits. How does somebody get to override the majority? How does OTA get to override the majority? Everybody spoke. So like I said, I think it should be put off until after the 2025 election. That way, the people's voice can be really heard, and they'll speak on who is for or against the turnpike by removing them or leaving them in spot. Also, you should watch the David Rosenkrantz thing he did the other day, talking about how Norman, our cranium six levels are worse than California Darren Brockovich. And we want to put more blacktop in, more concrete.
Trey?
Yeah.
Would you stick to the one topic, please?
Yeah. Indefinitely.
Ben Pomer, Ward 4. I want to speak in favor of postponement, but also I have a couple of suggestions about this. You're not helpless when it comes to the OTA. You have two weapons at your disposal. You have taxes and you have zoning. So you could, if you wanted, you could say, we're going to impose a 20% tax on all OTA-related businesses unless you put, you put everything in exactly where we want you to put it. So you can define a narrow strip of land, and you can say, you have to put it here. If you don't, your OTA-related business is going to have to pay some 20% sales tax. You can do the same with ordinances. You can write an ordinance that says, we will deny all industrial applications or whatever unless you do it the way we want it done. So you can twist their arm. You don't have to go into a negotiation without a cudgel. You can literally just make them do what you want.
Good evening. My name is John McKay. I live in Ward 5, and I'm the new guy in the block. I've only been here three years, but already testified before the Supreme Court on this issue, and now I'm here at the city council. I appreciate you all being here, but I want to say I am impressed with the citizens of Norman.
Would you address council, please, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm impressed with the citizens of Norman. I served in the 101st Airborne Division. It was Vietnam, 1967 to 1969, so I've seen a thing or two. And I was in asset-based lending, and I've been around the world. I've lived on every continent I think possible, but the three things I love about Oklahoma is, one, Norman. Two, McBride Orthopedic Hospital, where I had back surgery, and Neil Animal Hospital, where I take my dogs. So when we started, we had a pledge allegiance to the flag, and you all have a pledge allegiance to the city of Norman. And the city of Norman are these people back here. This is what the city of Norman is about. So anything you do with the OTA, you must include the citizens of Norman. And if I ever have to go back to combat, I'll take the people behind me with me, because I'm impressed. I am very impressed. Thank you, and I go for postponement until the legal issues are settled. Thank you very much.
My name is Trey Bates. I live in Ward 8, and I have a business in Ward 3. Actually own Hay Day, which is right in the path of what much of this turnpike is likely to affect. So I'd like to say two things. One, with regard to the postponement. I support the postponement because I believe that it's important that the, that the questions get asked as much as possible, although I worry when I hear people, you know, talk that it's going to be a little hard to maybe answer the questions in a way that'll ultimately settle most of the questions that people have. And the reality is that it's hard owning a house, and I'm not trying to compare myself to peoples who own houses or have property that is part of their, their, their home life that's affected by this, but it's also hard to own a business and be in the middle of all this and not know what direction it's going to go. So these continued postponements create a hardship, and again, I'm not trying to put myself in the place of others, but they create a hardship that just having the, having this unresolved creates. So I would argue that continuing to put off the decision is, is, has its own problems. The second thing is, this resolution was brought back after the Turnpike Authority took out all of the access roads and access points and attempted to only address the east-west portion of the turnpike that for even most of the people that are against it, or some of the people that are against it, would agree that that is moving forward. Now, I know that the north-south piece of it by the lake has a lot of questions, and it was specifically left out of this. So what I would hope is that we could have the discussions that we feel are necessary to get questions answered, but that we could move forward on at least the piece of this that we know is going to happen and make the best of it for our city. I, like everybody else, feel really, I know this is hard for you guys, and I know it's hard for all of you, but please, move this forward as reasonably fast as possible and make the decision, at least with regard to this east-west connector, because it impacts a lot of people's lives in a lot of different ways, and getting it settled is really important. So I appreciate the moving forward, but let's get a decision. Thank you.
Katie Brunk, Ward 8. I live right along Indian Hills Road, so I'm one of the people that would be pretty dramatically affected. I'm fortunate, my house for now seems to be left out of the equation, but I do know what it's like to have, to move out of your home suddenly and unexpectedly and find a new one in the city of Norman that is affordable, adequate, and something that you want. Like, who wants to settle for a house? That's where you're supposed to live forever? No. It's really hard to find that here. I looked at some dumps, and I did it in 30 days. I had very little time to make a decision. So I want to speak to the humanity of the situation for a second. There's a lot of really important things to consider, watershed, how much of the environment's going to be affected, all of that.
Can you speak to what the?
Indefinite, AKA forever, if possible. But you guys have to remember, human beings are paying the ultimate price for whatever decision you make with the OTA. Developers aren't human beings in the same sense as the homeowners that are being affected are. They're standing to make quite a bit of money, actually, because you're taking homes and they're building them. So it's a major conflict of interest. You can't take anything they have to say in support of the OTA as anything but disingenuous, and you have to go, be able to sleep at night. You have to live with your decision on whether or not you put that many people out of their homes. Some of them, I don't know, centuries own their family farmlands that we rely on and love. I drove out there the other day.
You're going?
No, I'm not.
Yeah, you are.
Postpone it forever. I mean, I'm in favor of a study session, but only if we get to ask the questions and not you all.
Hello, my name is Mohamed Farzane. I'm living in Ward 3, about half a mile south of the highway we are talking about. I appreciate, you know, suggesting to postpone it. I know it's very difficult for the council to find out exactly if, if the authority, if, you know, they really can put a highway there or we can stop it, but I think we have to get some solid answer for the people here to know if we can continue, if we can stop them or not. If we can stop them, let's stop them. If we cannot stop them, let's just give them a wish list and push them to give us the wish list. I appreciate it.
Hi, Miami Winler, Ward 2. Okay, so why do they keep trying? They keep trying this because they need Norman to agree with this. OAS 69, Section 3006, Consent of Governing Body. The trustees, which would be, in this case, I guess the OTA, shall negotiate a contract or contracts to accomplish the purposes enumerated in Section 1 of this act. But basically, they have to obtain the consent of the governing body of any county, city, or town. So that's what this resolution is about. They want to get our consent. If we don't get their consent, then they can't do anything. Thanks.
Okay, Rob Norman, Ward 3, and I can't resist using this. I was going to use it on the main thing, but the old Yogi Bear told us it's déjà vu over, all over again, and here we are. Now we're on a motion to postpone. I heard a motion, and I might have heard five or six seconds, so I gotta kind of read the room on this. I think, first of all, you can vote no on what is an incredibly inferior resolution. It's far inferior to the one you voted down unanimously a month and a half ago and tried to do work on again. And then you can conduct a public hearing. One thing I would say is next week is too soon, because we're on the eve of the presidential election, we're on the eve of statewide elections. I don't read, and perhaps you know something I don't, as Joe Akella, Kristi McCullough, David Strebe, John Bowman, all that crowd who are going to want to come, Wendy Smith, the Director of Finance at OTA, I don't, those people all need to come, and I don't see where their schedules have been cleared for that yet, maybe not. And, and yes, I understand we're trying to start something here, and I would also say it can't be either a study session like we've been having or a public hearing like the first one for the Tiff. I think, again, to repeat, we're doing a lot of good things, but it needs to be a real public hearing where both council and the public get their questions answered. Because I remember the last time we tried to have a public hearing, I had to string a whole bunch of questions together in three minutes, and I maybe got half of them answered, and they weren't very good answers, a lot of them. Some of them were, some of them weren't, and we had to adapt. We didn't get notice that the, that the hearing was going to be that way. We got notice up on the board as we came in that we were going to have to do it that way. You need to have the freedom to ask questions. We need to have the freedom to ask questions. And of course, if we do this next week and we're trying to ask, well, the public gets to ask questions, guess who that's going to fall on in a week to try to do it? We need more time to prepare that. Not only do those folks need to be down here, but you need to have the other side here. Oklahomans for Responsible Transportation. We were given a little shot at a study session, but probably not as much of a shot as Richard McCown was. We need, we were refused a council member's right to ask us questions. We had to do a hurried presentation, and then a council member specifically said, I've got a lot of questions for Dr. Serrato and Mr. Norman, and the answer to that was no. That was wrong. You were just trying to hurry through the process and get your usual little conference study session.
I had a prepared thing to say tonight, and I think it still speaks to a reason to postpone this decision, although if you're confident in voting no and voting against the resolution, I'd like to go ahead and just do that tonight. But if you're not confident, I would like to postpone it, the reasons being, passing this resolution would weaken the efforts of our legislators, both Democrats and Republicans, who are diligently working on bills to limit the OTA's authority and protect our local interests. These legislators have informed me that Norman supporting a resolution with the OTA undermines their work in our community's governance. Second, the claims that the OTA has or will remove critical access points are misleading. They cannot legally land-lock properties as established in the Oklahoma Landowners' Bill of Rights. Furthermore, concerns that reduced, concerns that reduced access points will hinder emergency responses are unfounded. Access roads are required to maintain necessary routes for emergency services. The OTA's plans for excessive land acquisitions for wetlands mitigation could lead to unnecessary loss of our community, especially given their history of broken promises and unfinished projects. They have not turned over land from previous acquisitions as promised, leaving municipalities with financial burdens. The OTA has also failed to conduct necessary environmental studies that could impact the Lake Thunderbird watershed, raising serious concerns about the potential harm to our local government, our local environment. We must recognize that Norman citizens will retain access to existing routes without any new benefits from this resolution. Norman residents will still have access to the same routes as before, including Indian Hills Road, Choctaw Road, Peabody Road, Sooner Road, 60th Street, and I-35. This resolution does not offer new advantages for our community. Let's not forget that we previously voted against a similar resolution, fully aware of the OTA's intentions to threaten and bribe their way back in. Supporting this resolution now could be interpreted as an endorsement of the OTA's plans, allowing them to claim city support in negotiations and court proceedings, which could weaken our position in ongoing battles over projects like the east-west connector and the south extension. We have momentum on our side. House Bill 2263 was recently passed, enhancing transparency and oversight of the OTA. Our representatives are actively working on legislation to curb the OTA's overreach, addressing critical issues like eminent domain reform and open records. In summary, I urge the council to oppose this resolution or kick it down the road till you have more information. The OTA's actions raise significant concerns about their reliability and commitment to local infrastructure. We must advocate for our community, support our legislators, and engage residents.
Who don't know me, Evan Dunn, Ward 7. I don't think that we should postpone. I think that we should vote on this. We should turn it down. We should kill it, and then we should contemplate on finding a different route. We should contemplate, you know, putting an elevated tram over I-35. There are alternatives, and I think the alternative of putting in an ordinance that says, hey, all eminent domain purchases have to have a multiple. You have to pay 10 times market value. You have to pay ten times market value for properties. Disincentivize them so that whenever we do negotiate, whenever we do talk to them, like the gentleman said, we're in a position of power, we're in a position of leverage that might make them respect us.
I'm Nadine Jewell. I live in two, but my son is in five. And I'll change the subject a little bit on this. We've been talking about amendments and resolutions and all this stuff. I want to tell you, my son has a house, and we have a large family, and they all go out to his house, which is off of thirty-seven, whatever street out there. And they're going to go right through his house and just tear it down. But why should they? Because our big family goes out there, and they have picnics, they ride their bikes around there, they go swimming out there, they go fishing out there. It's a home. And why should any company or any person be able to say, I want your property and I'm going to take it? So his house is in hostage now. He doesn't know whether to put in another driveway, or to put on a new roof, or to do anything with it, because as long as it's on hostage, why should he put money into it? So I hope you'll think about it at this time. It's not paperwork that you have to worry about, it's people's lives. And let's get rid of this mess and say, we do not want it.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Blake. I live in Ward Five. I've lived in Norman since nineteen sixty-three, and I would appreciate that you listened to me. I've seen a lot of things happen and going on. One of the things that happened before I got here was in nineteen sixty-one, and I think that everything that you're saying right now is a moot point, because in nineteen sixty-one, the council adopted two emergency ordinances to annex the land, to protect the land for the water quality of Lake Thunderbird, which the city of Norman was going to be using. At that time, there were less than forty thousand people in the city of Norman. Since that time, I don't know that an emergency has been declared gone because the property is still annexed, it was never given back to the people. So if you are, are still doing what you, as a council, said you were going to do in nineteen sixty-one to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the land that you incorporated, then you are going against what you've already said with no reason. Everything that you're doing here affects the public welfare, health, and safety of the citizens that became residents of Norman pursuant to the ordinances that you said needed to be passed because there was an emergency. So I ask you to go back and look and see what you decided, you, the, the city council of Norman, what you decided back in nineteen sixty-one. And then you look at this again and ask yourself, can I in good conscience say that the promise that we made to these people, we're not going to keep? That's my point. Thank you.
Cynthia Rogers, Ward Four. Um, would everybody just hold up whatever ward you live in so we can get a look at the variety? What ward? Okay. All of Norman. Who needs this resolution? OTA. Who doesn't need this resolution? The city of Norman. All my neighbors. It seems to me there's little danger of voting no on a resolution that actually invites a turnpike and still having the study session, but not really the study sessions that we've had recently, because those have all, um, I think have been disrespectful to the public, giving proponents an hour to just talk about whatever, bring in whoever, talk as long as they want, and then giving subject matter experts three minutes. It's not the way you do it. So if you're going to have a town hall, which I think is probably a good idea, I request that you let subject matter experts submit questions ahead of time and then have OTA come in with answers to all the questions, or, you know, at least the most important ones. So postponement indefinitely, actually, I prefer just to say no to this and keep coming back with something better.
Motion, will you restate your motion?
A motion to postpone this item tonight so that we may have a study session. The intent was to have it at the next possible study session meeting. Uh, that is under the assumption that calendars work for everybody and that we can get all the requested parties here for that night. I know I'm going beyond the motion, but I'm just trying to give some context to it.
Yeah, you're, what I'm looking for is, 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 do you want a study session? Uh, do you want a special session? What, you know, are you going to change your motion? How do you want to do it?
I would prefer a special session.
Would you?
Yeah.
And, uh, and a date that we could do that?
Well, Mayor, I mean, you can do it as quickly as next week. The date is open, but if you're, if you want to just clarify the motion to a date that works with their calendar, I mean, we would, we, you can't really give a date for that because we wouldn't know until we.
But I don't have to give a date, sure.
So did mine, apparently. Um, you don't have to give a date certain. If you don't give a date certain, it just says postpone indefinitely, it comes back when you're ready for it to come back. But if you want, if your intent is to make sure that members of OTA can be here and all of that, I mean, we would need the opportunity to reach out to them, obviously, to see what date works, so I don't know that you want to throw a date out there right now, unless you, I mean, do whatever you want, but.
Date, um, under the assumption that we are going to do our best to get all of the necessary parties here. I think if we have this without the, the full team here represented, it's no point in doing it.
I understand. Who was your second? Do you remember?
Helen.
Do you agree with it?
Uh, yes. And also, I would just ask, could we clarify what a special session would entail?
Well, the difference between a study session and a special session is that usually you only take action at regular council meetings or special sessions, and I shouldn't say usually, you can only take action at those types of meetings. So if your intent is to also vote on it that same night, we could post it as a special session. If your intent is just to have a town hall where people can come and ask questions and talk, it can be posted as a study session.
That was the intent.
And.
Oh, okay.
Your intent for letting everybody talk and ask questions can still take place.
Okay, that's, that's the goal. As long as the public has the opportunity to ask questions and have them answered, that is the goal.
Yeah, I would agree with that. All right. Now I gotta write it out, because.
I got it.
You got it.
Okay, Austin wanted to talk.
Councilmember Ball?
If you know me, I'm the last person who wants to kick this down the road. I think the city should receive another national championship for as much as we postpone things. There's got to be more than anybody else in this country. So, but i- in this instance, um, I, I don't know if I agree or not, because we all sat in this room a few weeks ago, and we unanimously voted against doing this with the OTA. And so, Mr. Powell, I gotta ask you a question. We all voted that, and yet here we are again. Can you tell me why we're back here and what the OTA did to warrant us even discussing this again?
Your Honor, the OTA didn't warrant anything. I received phone calls from council members after they had heard from constituents in their ward requesting this conversation take place specifically along the Indian Hills East-West corridor to exclude any conversation related to the North-South corridor. So that, that prompted the conversation last night.
Sorry, I didn't have your mic turned on.
I'm sorry.
I turned on the wrong one, sorry.
Good evening. Um, so the, the Turnpike Authority did not request or warrant any of these conversations. This conversation was requested by members of the council who received phone calls from their constituents interested in this infrastructure along the Indian Hills corridor specifically. Uh, and they specifically stated to, their, their goal was to exclude any infrastructure on the North-South corridor. So that prompted the conversation last week and tonight's agenda item as well.
So I, I think it's very important for this study, for this study session, um, that we know who from OTA is going to be here, because everybody here deserves to, to be able to ask questions to the person responsible for kicking you out of your homes. And so I, I know you've been dealing with this, with this for two years and longer, and we're asking you to keep on dealing with it for our satisfaction for who knows how much longer. But I, I think we need to have a one final study session. I prefer a town hall, but at the very, very minimum, we need to have a representative from Pikeoff OTA and their council. Well, we are a constitutional republic, so each of us was elected to answer your questions and to ask the questions that you have. And so I apologize if you don't have the faith in your representative that that will get done. So to ensure that it happens, I, I believe that we need an actual public hearing. I believe that individuals from OTA need to be here to answer the questions. Uh, I believe everybody here deserves to hear what they have to say. We also know that OTA is undergoing an audit, that they're being investigated by the Attorney General. I think these are very, very real concerns that we need answered before we do anything else. So, I mean, at the very least, we can postpone it till the end. But ultimately, I believe that the, the only people that can win this fight are sitting in this room, and it's not anybody up here, it's not anybody at the state level, it's you. And so as long as you're willing to fight and you're willing to keep on going, then you have my support, and I think you have the support of most of this council. So let's get it done.
Councilmember, Monica. Councilmember.
So do we need to identify who all the necessary parties are besides the OTA? Like, who are all the necessary parties?
Well, that would be whatever you, I mean, whoever council wants here, you just need to, I don't know that you can, well, I'm just going to stop talking, Daryl.
We'll, we'll send out the calendar request to anybody at OTA or any other party council's interested in hearing from.
Yeah, um, I would like to request that AIM Steering Committee chairs be present during that town, or study session slash town hall. Um, and then my next question is to ensure that people have adequate access to, like, you know, submit their questions. I was wondering if we might have a form fill or something where people can submit, we can gather them, uh, kind of have an idea of what the different categories are going to be. I would like, you know, especially for the AIM Steering Committee members that will show up, you know, have the information they need to have on hand for that. Um, and I would say the same probably for OTA. Um, and then, uh, I just, I guess with the town hall portion of it, it would just be us talking with them. We would, you know, get through all the questions, and then we would break, we wouldn't be voting on anything.
Correct.
Okay, and, okay, thanks.
Councilmember Grant, we can make a, a form, a fillable form on our website for questions to be submitted. I'm sorry, I'm saying we can make a fillable form on our website for questions to be submitted. Um, we will also post on that same form the date that, in time when we can consolidate all these people that you want there, so they will know, basically, when they have to have their questions submitted. If you want them answered that evening, you probably need to cut that off at least a week before the meeting, so they have time to answer the questions if they're coming from multiple jurisdictions.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Holman?
Yeah, uh, I was going to ask the same thing. I, I do want to make sure that, um, there's a way for questions to be submitted, and then if officials are here that they're not answering, I don't know a bunch of times, that they have time to be able to give us an answer. And I, I would think that after a couple of years now that we've been at this, that they should have the answers and should not be answering, I don't know, like they did last time back in twenty twenty-two, so. Um, and I, I do agree with the town hall format and allowing questions from the audience, but as many that could be submitted prior would be, uh, ideal. Um, and then, I don't know, I know I'd want our staff when it comes to storm water management, um, infrastructure, I don't know, I've thought about other legal opinions, I mean, I, we have our city attorney and opinions that he's given us, um, but I would be interested in what is out there as far as some other, is there any other differing legal opinions? Uh, anybody that would be an expert on the matter that could come, if that's out there, I don't know. And can confirm or not, uh, the opinions we've been given would be helpful. And really, just, uh, in the end, I do have a lot of questions. I wrote a lot of questions in preparation for this meeting. Um, I would like to see what the possibility of a legally binding contract and not a resolution, but a, if we're going to ask them to do something or some things that it's guaranteed that what we ask them for is going to be done, and that we would be able to hold them legally accountable some way if they don't do them, as people have told stories about other cities not getting resolutions followed through with and OTA having a history of that, um, if there's a way for us to do a legally binding contract on anything we ask them for, I'd be very interested to see what that might look like, if it's possible. And, uh, anyway, I, I hate to continue moving this down as well, but there are still a lot of questions about this that many of us have. Um, and I think getting the OTA representatives here in this room for us to ask questions, for the public to ask questions, that can be answered now that they've been working on it for a couple of years, um, is the best path forward currently, so. Uh, but I do also share concern of other colleagues on the council about a resolution failing unanimously on this council just less than two months ago, and what has changed about this resolution that would make our minds change to anything different? And so I don't currently know. It's the, it's not different, and if anything, it's less than the prior resolution, as one commenter mentioned, so, um, I have a lot of concern about this and, um, and about them following through even if we do pass a resolution asking for anything. And so, um, that would be my desire with this public hearing as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
Yeah, I meant to clarify with the AIM Steering Committee, like, yes, want the chairs, but definitely want the Stormwater Subcommittee Chair, um, maybe the Trails and Parks one as well. Um, and then also to echo Councilmember Holman's, um, that's what I got out of all the public comments around postponing was contract versus resolution. I would be curious, um, to have some answers around that as well.
Are you going to make that into a resolution?
Well, it won't be ready at the next meeting, I promise you.
Yeah. Anybody else? Anybody else from council? All right.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to postpone indefinitely. Um, the intent is to hold a town hall study session at a date to be determined once we can, can, um, basically coincide calendars, and, let me back up. The motion is to postpone indefinitely, period. This, the rest of this is just kind of what they've said that they've agreed to. We'll have people here from, to represent all these areas that they have requested. We will have, have a fillable form on our website where you can submit questions in advance. Um, the meeting will at least be a week past the deadline for your questions, because we're going to need staff and the other entities are going to need time to answer those, so. Um, and then, from what I'm understanding, you'll also be able to ask questions at the meeting. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
There you go. Oh, he's gone.
Yeah. The motion to postpone indefinitely passes unanimously with Councilmember Dixon outside the chambers.
All right, next item on the agenda is miscellaneous comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody sign? Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for miscellaneous comments?
Um, yes, sir, let's. Sorry, I got my stuff out of order here. We'll start with Julie Sondag. James Livingston. Rob Norman.
Rob Norman, Ward three, I do have some miscellaneous comment. First of all, thank you to those of you who are looking to find a solution for everyone involved, that involves services, business owners, unhoused people, most of all. We're starting to get down the road toward a solution, and we're starting to do it in a more humane way. And please stay at it, and the devil is gonna be in the details in that contract, obviously. Now, about what we did tonight, I do think it needs to be fair and a matter of due process, and it needs to be a plenary-type town hall and study session, and not a, "I want to get out of here quick, so you can't talk" kind of thing. That's, that's, that, that's OTA, that's the OTA MO. That, that's what we experienced at the OTA, is we're gonna do this, and we don't have any guardrails on us, and sometimes you guys go beyond the guardrails that are on you, and you kind of did that tonight, and thank you, at least for, at least for doing that. Now, the first question that needs to be asked is why in the world do you have to give them a kiss the ring, political pamphlet, resolution before you negotiate some kind of solution to this thing? No one does that. No one does that except someone trying to exercise power over you, and that is a terrible red flag. You get that resolution, they're gonna have you in their paws, and they're gonna give you a terrible contract, and they're gonna say, "Oh, maybe you can do an A or a D, but take it or leave it, we're the OTA." They don't bargain. They tell. They don't ask, they do. You have to stand up to stop them. And it's not a magic silver bullet, it's a lot of building blocks. And don't take those building blocks away from those of us who are building the case with the Attorney General, with the state legislature, and the federal government to stop them. If you want to know our plan, we'll tell you our plan. But it's gonna take a while, and you're gonna have to be patient with us. We can win this thing, and I think there's some people all around the world that found out, you don't get conquered if you don't give up. Winston Churchill said, "We will never surrender." His predecessor said, "Well, let's give the Germans a little bit of stuff, and they'll be okay with it." Well, guess what, they aren't. The OTA is not. They take and they tell, they don't give. So keep that in mind, maybe you can...
Tess, Tessie Hirschfield? Did Tessie leave? Okay, sorry. You guys, please not clap, I know you're excited, but it's difficult for people to hear and to come up, so please abide by the rules.
Uh, Council, I think that this is the right call, specifically because it leaves the existing resolution in place, which is unanimously opposed to every single part of the Access Oklahoma Turnpike Plan. I count that as a win, and I especially want to thank Councilman Holman, who always makes very thoughtful and insightful comments. So I feel good about tonight's conclusion. But I will say going forward, if you do believe that this study session will get you the answers or the results that you want, I would encourage you to rethink that optimism. And my experience, the turn, and this comes from having interacted with them at multiple public, what they called listening sessions, early in the Access projects, stone walling, evasion, belligerence, angry outbursts, just for asking very straightforward questions. The other exhibit I can give you, or example I can give you, this is a copy of their budget, which someone just passed on to me, if you look at multiple editions of this over the past few years, the opening always has a description of the Access projects, the start date is always different. This one, it just says sometime in 2022. Last year, it said it was 2021. The budget itself is a hot mess. There is chaos and confusion and incompetence at every level, and having read a number of their internal emails obtained via open records, I can tell you that if you had their finance director here, she would not be able to answer questions without calling the financial advisor in Dallas, because he is really the one providing all the information to the public, to the state legislature, and he has a very vested interest in getting OTA the worst bond deals, the perpetual refinancing. So do not expect too much in the way of real answers to whatever questions are discussed in this listening session. I would be very happy to provide my own expertise, just based on my research and working with Stan Ward, to give you my take on what I think is going on there. But really, the best answers will come from the state auditor, who has access to all kinds of information that the rest of us don't, that could potentially, like with Epic, result in criminal charges. So I do really believe that as well-intentioned as your plan is, a better option is to wait for those results, and then frame your questions in response and plans for the OTA in Norman, based on what comes out then. So thank you.
Hi, Amy Serrato, Ward five. So I have to tell you that I feel like I'm in an abusive relationship with the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, and some of the people that are doing their work as their minions. And I can't get out of it. I feel like for two and a half years, we've been trying to get out of this abusive relationship, and we were, I thought we were good to go eight weeks ago, and now by rule of three, y'all put this back on the agenda. And I'm not okay with that, because it was unanimous vote eight years, eight weeks ago. I want to tell you that we have tried to escape this abusive relationship many times, and you've all asked me about that. The first thing we did was go to the OTA board, and I made the first presentation in board history, and you know what they did? They just laughed, said, "No, we're not gonna change anything, thank you for your time, but go back. We don't want to talk to you." And the second thing we did was go to the judiciary and file some legal briefs. We wanted district court on summary judgment, they violated the Open Meetings Act, and the Supreme Court failed to stop the abuse and let the mistreatment go on by overturning that legal doctrine. And they made it impossible for us to adjudicate any violations that the OTA might exact on their citizens by that unfortunate legal opinion. Then we went to the Attorney General and the state auditor, and they said, "Yeah, you're right, there is some bad stuff going on, we're gonna call for an investigative audit, we still don't have those results. I'm telling you, people are gonna go to jail after that, those results come in." And I'm not making that up. We asked the Attorney General for an opinion on the legality of one man serving three state entities, and he ruled it illegal. You see, we're trying to hold government accountable, and we're winning, and we need you to back us up, because we understand the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority implicitly. They lied under oath when they were deposed in the Open Meetings Act. Do you think they're gonna tell you the truth in a town hall? They will not. And I urge you, urge you to vote no on the resolution, and get a contract that says exactly what they're gonna do. And I know the city has asked them for a contract, and I know that TJ Dill and Joa Kelly have denied that contract. You know why they've denied the contract? Because they don't want to do anything you're asking. They only need your consent. Don't give it to them. Help us exit this abusive relationship once and for all, so we can go back to our families, and tell them no means no. Thank you.
Stephen Ellis?
You all take a lot of guff for what happens in these chambers, and I admit that some of it is from me. I want to discuss why that is a little bit. Part of the reason is that so much of what happens on Tuesday nights in city council is just an absolute surprise to so many of your constituents. I know I'm supposed to address the whole council, so I'm not gonna say who does better or worse on this kind of issue, so I'm addressing the typical council members, say. Tonight's OTA resolution was really a case in point. Two months ago, a huge number of people attended a meeting where they told you that they didn't want to do anything to help OTA build turnpikes through Norman, and you unanimously rejected that resolution that would have had Norman cooperate with OTA. It's apparent now that OTA's allies, not even OTA, apparently, that's what I just learned, came knocking on at least some of your doors soon after the, to get you to reverse that decision, but not a peep from any of those people in the know. Admittedly, the resolution tonight was different from the previous one, but most of the arguments against that earlier resolution also apply to this one, as you've noticed tonight. And none of the council members who contemplated switching sides on this vote bothered to publicize any of their doubts about their previous decision, or seek any further information from their constituents that you voted with before. Your constituents are obviously gonna read that as a flip-flop. But the OTA issue isn't the only issue on which council silence on various substantive issues has been a problem. The whole arena tiff discussion from spring through summer was about council members playing cagey rather than facilitating a relevant debate. And the big fight about a friend's house that we're still in the middle of turned out to hinge on council being mad at food and shelter, something that's apparently been going on since the summer, but not discussed in the open until relative, relatively recently, when it was really too late to heal any kind of breach between the two organizations. So I know you guys don't get paid anything, but, but you did actually volunteer, and part of your job is to deliberate about policy, and part of your job is to represent your constituents, but you can't do either effectively unless you're public about where you are on issues. You don't have to have your mind made up, but if you process this stuff a little bit out loud, you'll make it much clearer to your constituents what's going on. So I want to request of you, please be transparent. If you're silent about issues and stuff comes up in a study session, people are like, "Whoa, I thought we already handled that," it is not a good look, that's not what democracy is about. Thanks.
Tiffany Stevens? Okay, I will call you when I get to your name. Oh, no.
Stevens, Ward five. I just, I had some notes here, so I'm just gonna try to kind of cover some of the things, but I do think a contract's better than a resolution, but if they breach a contract, you know, you're forced to go to court, and then if it goes to Oklahoma Supreme Court, I mean, if they can say that, you know, from whatever it was, Tuttle to Norman means Norman to Purcell, then they can probably say that they can get out of the contract. I just don't think we have anything to back us up if they do even breach a contract. And theoretically, they, we should, but I, I just worry about that. I also worry that when we do the study session, all of their answers, I mean, none of them will be the truth. And so that, that's a worry as well. I think there have been some things that have been interpreted wrong in the statutes, and I just want to, I mean, I put in an email, but if, if you didn't get a chance to read it, it was a long email. Seventeen sixteen B does say that you may grant roads to the Turnpike Authority as you deem reasonable. That means you may not grant them if you do not deem it reasonable. So you do have the authority to withhold your roads, and I think somebody said earlier, they don't want to go further south because of the river. So I think that is something that could possibly stop them. The supremacy clause has been thrown around a lot, and I just want to make sure you guys know that that means a federal law trumps a state law, which trumps a city law. The, you guys get your authority, the city gets their authority from a state statute that says you guys govern the roads in your area. I also don't think we need any extra access points, access points every two to three miles seems okay to me. Ninety-five miles an hour does not seem okay to me, ninety-five miles an hour. Also, they haven't done any of their studies yet, and I think we should not do any kind of resolution or contract or anything until they do, and until they start acting, you know, in an ethical, legal manner. The, you're not allowed to use them in a domain for economic development. It is unconstitutional by Board of County Commissioners Muskogee versus Lowry, so you should look at that, because I think this whole project is for economic development, and that is not constitutional. They're also destroying five times the amount of homes that any other turnpike has ever destroyed, and we need to look at that. I just, I, you can't change the world if we keep doing the same thing that's always done, and something has to be done to stop the corruption, the unethical, illegal, and unconstitutional practices of the OTA. So please stand with us and fight them. Thank you.
Dave Moore?
I think kicking the can down the road to us. Study session postponement is a cop-out move, it's evasive, it's ignoring the facts that everybody already knows. The OTA is not gonna tell you anything different at this session that's being talked about, because there is nothing different. It's the same all the way up and down the road. Another thing that's the same is that they haven't completed one study. Two years, two and a half years ago, the Norman City Council requested them to do studies, otherwise the council was gonna resist the toll roads idea. They haven't completed a single cotton-picking study. So what are they gonna tell you? They're not gonna hurry up and finish some studies so they can have a study session with the council. I think we need to just make a decision, we need to man up, woman up, and just, just get it done. The whole idea that the council is powerless, I think, is a mistake. The power is derived from the people, that's where the council gets its power, the state gets its power from the cities and the people, and the federal government gets its power from the states and the people. But it's ultimately the people that have the power, and your people, too. And it would be awesome to be able to go to the state Capitol when we're working on our, our legislation and say, "My city's got our back. My mayor and my city council are with us on this." That will carry a lot of weight at the Capitol. So I hope you'll take that seriously. Thanks.
Ben Plummer? Ben Lee? I don't see him. John Scammyhorn?
Good morning, I'm John Scammyhorn, a retired chemical engineer. I have lived in Ward one for forty-three years, and I'm not gonna talk about the turnpike. The fact I'm wearing a red shirt is just what I, it's the first shirt that came out of my closet, I had no idea of this color scheme to date. I, my discussion has to do, it was derived from interesting thing about the, the shelter discussion. Our community discussion about city funding for homeless shelter over the past few years shows that we're talking past each other. The groups of participants have such different fundamental values that agreement seems impossible. I will call one group libs and the other conservatives. Libs emphasize emotional reasoning, while conservatives rely on logic. As an example, I choose the concept of compassion. Libs often use compassion as an excuse for using unlimited resources to help those in need. I've heard the refrain, "Have you no compassion?" so many times, when I am advocating restriction of... of refunding for social services. Compassionate conservatism, from the dictionary, is an American political philosophy that stresses using conservative techniques and concepts in order to improve the general welfare of society. The philosophy supports the implementation of policies designed to help the disadvantaged and alleviate poverty through the free market, envisioning a triangular relationship between government, charities, and faith-based organizations. Those of us who advocate restraint in municipal funding of shelters are practicing compassionate conservatism. From the time I first studied economics in high school, it seemed to me that liberals view funding from government as a big pot of money, and their job is to decide how to distribute the money without any regard to the fact that distribution and tax schemes very much affect how much money there is to distribute. When the city was considering purchasing a site in North Norman to build a new shelter, it was pointed out that the ongoing cost of such a new shelter would drive the city into bankruptcy in about five years. Conservatives were horrified. Liberals seem unconcerned since they can only see a need met, and the eventual need to raise taxes was viewed as no problemo by liberals. This difference in points of view make me concerned about the ability of the two groups to reach consensus. I think it is important to understand that the philosophical underpinnings of the two group make negotiations like two people speaking unrelated languages trying to hammer out a complex agreement. It's the Tower of Babel all over again. Let us show compassion for...
Kelly Wilson? Randy Carter? Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see you.
Kelly Wilson, Ward 6. Signing a resolution is written intent to partner at some point in the future. That written intent is the green light the OTA needs to include excess private property in their design. They will move forward with acquisition of 13 homes that would otherwise be spared. The OTA has confirmed that. It was in the paper and in one of their press releases. By the way, I did not make up that number of 13 homes. And for what? What does Norman gain from any resolution with the OTA? Nothing. Absolutely nothing. It holds zero value for the city, is not a binding contract. It does, however, hold value to 13 families in our community. Your signature requires them to hand over the warranty deeds to their house to the OTA and prevents them from challenging the take of their home in court during condemnation proceedings. So who are these people? Samuel and Renee Bamuth, they've lived in their house for 14 years. Kimberly Burks, 32 years. Charles Kavett, 11. William and Kitty Klutfelter, one year. I have to wonder, did they know about the turnpike? Did they know that the house they were buying was going to be taken? As I understand it, realtors are not required to disclose this, and so it makes one wonder. And I want you guys to understand, this is the situation the Turnpike Authority has put lots of landowners, buyers and sellers, in this awkward position of, will this house be here? Should I disclose this when I sell it? Can I sell it in good conscience, knowing that the people that move in might not know that there's a turnpike coming through? The Downey Trust, four years. Donald and Vera Ruth Fleming, 32 years. Annette Gunter, she just built a brand-new house five years ago. Jerry and Deborah Sue, 32 years. I don't have the rest of my notes in front of me, but I can tell you, these people have lived in their homes for 30, 40 years, and you signing any resolution gives nothing for the city of Norman. They have not followed through on even contractual agreements they have had with the city of Hara or Oklahoma County. They will not follow through on a resolution that means absolutely nothing. They will not follow through even on a binding contract. The county of Oklahoma County and the city of Hara will have to sue them to make them follow through on their contractual obligations. I would encourage you to tell the OTA, "No. No to a resolution. No to a contractual agreement. No to anything," because they will not follow through. We know that, because that's how they...
Randy Carter? Pass? Okay. Mayumi Windler?
Mayumi Windler, Ward 2. So as a different kind of topic, recycling. I've been watching YouTube videos about ways where you can repurpose recycling materials, like, so the type 1s and type 2s are easily recyclable, but, you know, all the other numbers aren't. But what if you could grind those up, combine those, and make, like, bricks out of them? And then do something with the bricks? Sell them? Donate them? I don't know. But I have been stockpiling the higher number recycled plastics in my house since we stopped accepting those, and I really want to be able to do something with them. Thank you.
Pam Post?
I'm from Ward 5. I really want to thank everyone who read my emails today. I hear it from you that my voice has made a difference tonight. Thank you so much. I do want to state that the resolution that you all are postponing had items in it that greatly concerned me. First of all, Peabody Road and Choctaw Road that were mentioned in them as possible interchanges are not even in the city of Norman. Those locations are in the city of Oklahoma City. So why it's in your resolution, I don't know. The resolution is flawed. Another thing that's in it that greatly concerned me, and now this can be reworked, but as you rework it and go towards a binding contract, any time that they say the South Extension or use the abbreviation SET, that opens the door for them to wave a flag and wave a piece of paper that says, "Norman has agreed to this South Extension." So when you go through this binding contract process, please be aware not to include those in there. I also have problems with, and I'm sorry, Councilmember Grant, with having the AIM Committee on your town hall, whatever you want to call it, because they are tied into Garver, which isn't tied into OTA. Instead of just directly saying, "We want certain people from AIM to speak," let's at least give the chairman of the committee, Inger Gifford, the opportunity to say, "I will be here as the chairman of your AIM project, and I will bring these people along with me." That's what OTA will do. They may or may not show up, but that Poe will arrive with them at some point. The last thing that I want to mention is, it is very obvious that your city staff has been indoctrinated by phone calls and outside meetings with developers and OTA. You have people on staff who have questionable paths, and that is being reflected in the advice that they are giving you. It is not hard to find the evidence to back that up. I am concerned about it. These people here are concerned about it, and I think it's something that you all need to be aware of. Corrections were made tonight because they felt like they misspoke. I question that also. The people don't even have the respect to look at us in our faces. So where do we go? How do you regain the trust of the citizens?
Marguerite Larson?
Larson, Ward 6. And I must say that I am deeply concerned that this city council did not say no tonight, did not adhere to their no vote, as they have in the past. So what I want to know is, when someone says no, does no mean no, or do you need an explanation of the N and the O? I am also concerned about city staff and things that are being done behind closed doors, and you guys are not always briefed or made aware of things that have been happening behind closed doors, signatures that have been signed, sort of. So what I want to know is, when are you going to stand up the city, and when are you going to say enough is enough? This is the city council. We represent the citizens of Norman, not the developers, and not who's putting money in our pocket. So this should never have come up again. A no is a no.
Richard Baxter?
My name is Baxter, founder of nonprofit organization Racism Stinks. I am a junior at OU. Racism stinks, our logo is the skunk. We believe that... Somebody said something? Oh, thank you. We believe that community collaborations will improve race relations. Our motto is "Real, Not Woke." It's been a few weeks since I've been up here. I was running out of jokes. Okay? So Michael never laughs. But I got one. Let's see if we can get them. What do you get when you cross a very cute bear with a smelly skunk? Winnie the Poo. We got a few laughs out of that one, yeah. I'm gonna leave it at that. That'll be the last one. So I want to turn your attention to Oklahoma Community Statute 1-1, Love and Unity. Yes, I just invented that. Okay? But doesn't it sound like something we need? Right? All right. Well, in observation of this now-agreed-upon mandate, we are hosting a community collaboration with the Norman Police Department to outshine divisive narratives and bring that unity to the world. Join us this Saturday, 11:00 a.m., Andrews Park, for the Skunk Dog Cookout. Big H is going to be speaking, of course, and special thanks to our sponsors, Sonic Drive-In, Norman Air, King Copy. Love and blessings. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Cheryl Hoggett?
Cheryl Hoggett, Ward 5. And I hope I can read this, because I've marked out so much stuff, thinking that what I said while I go was going to be it. I do want to point out that one of the slides on, oh, sorry, on July 30th, at the city council study session, it contained six items to be included in the resolution. And at the bottom, it stated, "Should the council not approve this resolution, funding for all items listed above will be jeopardized." They even set a deadline. That's how important it was. This almost crosses, I think I've said this to you before, the line of coercion, and that's one of the descriptions in the Oklahoma State statute for coercion is, "Any act intended to cause a person to believe that the performance," I'm sorry, "that performing or failing to perform an act," that would be the adoption of the resolution, "would result in a serious financial harm or distress. The funding that would be jeopardized sounds like the financial harm or distress." This is what OTA does. They push, push, push right up to almost breaking the law, but they're saying, "Oh, no, we didn't cross that line." But they do. And what happened to that deadline? It was so important that we rushed this through and had all these meetings and all these hours of deliberation, and now that deadline wasn't important at all, because here we are again, rehashing the same thing. What happened to the deadline? I'm also confused, because at that same meeting, Mr. Pyle said, "We need," because this was about passing the resolution so we would have a seat at the table, "we need to think about ambulance access to both sides of the turnpike," you know, fire truck response, and those things. "It is important that we have a seat at the table to indicate why these intersections and underpasses of the local roads are so important. If you're on the wrong side of the street and the ambulance has to go four city miles to flip a U-turn around a turnpike interchange, come back to the house, that means a lot." I don't understand that statement, because State Statute 691706A would prevent that from happening. They can't close any of our section lines. It says, I won't read the whole statute, I'll just read the pertinent part. It, referring to...
I'm sure I pronounced that wrong. Paul Wilson?
Paul Wilson, Ward 1. I'm not talking about OTA. It's come to my attention for a while, I'm sure everybody's noticed it, from the federal government down to state level, down to city level, and even to the people, it's been a very divisive, hate-filled time in America. We've seen it from council members who have said stuff and done stuff on the dais towards their constituents. Some have actually apologized, some have not. The hate is real. The guy from Skunk... Skunk? Yeah. That guy is right. We need to get rid of the hate. I've seen it on social media. I have fallen victim to it, and I'm not going to lie. I've said some things recently that maybe I shouldn't have. And we've seen it all around. We've got a very important election coming up in a few weeks, and we just need to work together. It doesn't, our flag is red, white, and blue. We have two major parties. I know that's not what the flag stands for, so don't chastise me on social media about it, but we all need to work together. It doesn't matter what side of the aisle we're on, we need to work together. We have all seen, in America, there is nothing this country cannot do if we put our petty differences aside and come up with a solution that will better this country. It has been one of the founding staples of this country, that we will stand together through thick and thin and get things done that are right for this country. Now that I got a few extra minutes, I got 45 seconds. We all know that the city needs help as far as bringing in new business. We realized it when we were going over the last budget. Our income is only going up 2% a year, expenditures out 6. In any sense of the word, that's a failure. We need help. We need to bring in new business, not keep getting the same stuff that we already have. We tried it, and then people said, "Well, we don't want that. We got to try something." Doing something is better than doing nothing. If we continue down the same path, we get the same results. So that's all I got to say.
Cynthia Rogers?
Still me, still Ward 4. Thank you for all your, it's a long meeting, even though few items, and I appreciate it. Thank you for all your long meeting, even the few items, and I appreciate all the conversation from everybody in the room. I would like to make one comment about the AIM Steering Committee, and this is a frustration I've had in that process. And part of it is starting with assumptions or goals that we have to fit in 22,000 more housing units or people. I don't actually see that as a manifest destiny for the city. And then also, that whole process pretty much assumed from the beginning, there would be a turnpike, as opposed to, how would we best grow Norman in a sustainable way that improves the quality of the community, rather than, you know, more of the same, more strip malls, more fast food sorts of things, national chains. So, I think the AIM, I'm a little disappointed in the AIM discussion, that it didn't really start there. But I don't, I think it was a little bit polluted by this notion that the turnpike would be there, and that's unfortunate. As far as, how do you grow Norman? I think it's really hard to get ahead of retail, it's hard to get ahead of demand. People try to trick markets all the time, and it doesn't work. So I think you look at your gaps, we have a housing affordability gap, we have a transportation gap. I had some colleagues tell me that, boy, they would love it if the bus from Oklahoma City would go all the way to campus, and then maybe even all the way to the law school, because that would make a huge difference to them and to people that might use that, because there are jobs in Oklahoma City. There are people that live in Oklahoma City that work in Norman, and anything that we can do to strengthen that connection and commuting, not just by widening roads, but actually providing transportation alternatives, will make Norman grow, because we grow with Oklahoma City. And we can strengthen those connections. We don't have to have the jobs in Norman, we can have the people in Norman, and we can get people in Oklahoma City to come to Norman to work, to come to our festivals, enjoy our parks. So, maybe we can think in that direction. Thank you.
Cheryl Ann Dinsel?
Cheryl Ann Dinsel, and I have properties in Words 4 and 6. And first of all, I want to thank everybody for their time this evening, particularly the people who are watching online, because it does take time and energy. I want to talk right now about the new inventory that was put on the city website, the lead service line inventory. I don't know if you all have taken a good, hard look at that, I implore you to do that, because you'll see, there's a huge disparity on where the safe water lines are and where the safe water lines are not in this city. Take a good, hard look at it, it's really easy to find, you can click right through off of the first page of the website. It seems all of the problem areas are in the city's core neighborhoods. Now, 25 years ago, we were promised infrastructure in the core neighborhoods, particularly Old Silk Stocking. Improvements were supposed to be coming through with the CDBG funds, the grant programs. Norman is a legacy town, we don't even have to apply for that money, we get it irregardless. My questions are, where has all the money gone? Because in 25 years, Old Silk Stocking, Old Town Site, the other core neighborhoods, have not received guttering, promised water, infrastructure for handling stormwater, lighting, historical lighting. There's probably, oh, I would say, six historical lights in the entire Old Silk Stocking area, and we were promised old lighting, historical lighting, that's no longer historical. And now, because we're having a little bit of a crime wave downtown, we're getting high-powered, bright lights put up, where residents really don't want to have their, you know, backyards lit up like a Christmas tree. So my question is, what happened to all the CDBG money over the last 25 years? Why was it diverted to other things, other than the core neighborhoods, which we're the population that puts out the numbers to get the funds that have been diverted to somewhere else? Now, I know Linda Price no longer is with the city. Bless her heart, she did a good job. But Lisa Creek has been-
Floyd Carroll? Not seen Floyd. Richard McCown?
Ward 8. I just want to go on record, I spent six years trying to keep this turnpike from happening. And we did that, I literally met with the current director and the previous three directors, going all the way back to Gary Ridley. When we met with Mike Patterson, we said, hey, Norman doesn't want this. And he said, well, I can't take your word for that, who are you? I said, well, let me give you Mayor Miller's cellphone number. And he called her, and he called me back in a week, and he said, you're right, Norman doesn't want this turnpike. So we worked it out, or we thought we had, to do a five-lane boulevard extending Highway 37 out of Newcastle, across the South Canadian, all of that lines up with Indian Hills Road. Now, why did this matter? Costco. Costco had put their finger on the 130-acre site at Indian Hills Road and I-35, and they said, this is where we want to be. Problem is, there's the only rural interchange in the entire Oklahoma City metro at Indian Hills Road. And it was in ODOT's eight-year plan to update that, and we said, hey, can you make that the number-one priority? Because if you can get that built, Costco would be here. We, the city of Norman, not me, would be collecting on the order of about $5 million in sales tax annually, had all of that been able to be coordinated. They started drawing on it. ODOT has, I think the number's $30 billion worth of backlog that they need to do, maybe it's $19 billion, it's a lot of billion dollars in backlog, and they get allocation of a billion dollars a year to do their work. But we thought we had this five-lane boulevard worked out, even saw some drawings. I was told, hey, you can't share those with anybody, but you can start laying out your Costco idea. Six weeks go by, and I said, we'll have you an answer, six weeks. We call them up, hey, where we at? Give us another six weeks. And then what do we see? The announcement of Access Oklahoma. This turnpike, we're sitting here enraged about, frustrated about. But that's not what this resolution is about, it wasn't what the resolution was about two or three weeks ago. The resolution is about access roads next to the turnpike. That is the only thing this resolution is about. We're gonna only be-
Neva Haynes? Okay, I'm probably gonna miss this one. Kathy Paganoni? Evan Dunn? Evan, sorry, if you couldn't hear me.
Oh, for those who don't know me, Evan Dunn, 1400 Garfield Avenue. I got so much to say. First, I really need to apologize. Sometimes I can oversimplify things, and I can get passionate, and, you know, I overgeneralize. You know, when the TIF came up, I said it was a strip mall with an arena, and that's not fair. You know, those artists and those designers, they worked their tails off, probably, trying to put together a project that met all of the expectations. And I felt insulted that my constructive criticisms weren't acknowledged as being deserving of being integrated. And, you know, shame on me, you know? That's something that I strive to be better at, and I'm gonna continue to try to be better at that. Last, or two weeks ago, I had some statistics about the international students, and I want you to really understand where this passion is coming from. I've been living with a terminal illness for going on 12 years now, and every day, I am confronted with that mortal, that mortal feature to my day, to my consciousness, and it makes every breath, it makes every moment that much more precious. And each one of those international students, they pay about $50,000 for housing, for medical, for tuition fees, all of that. Our policies about splashing gasoline all over these parks, all over our yards, they despise that equality. They think that that is the most disrespectful thing that could be done, but they're too nice to tell us. The scale of our potential, the scale of the change that we could bring about, I think is unlimited. Each one of us has the power to change the world in our hands. I need more time. OTA won't give us anything, because they know that the watershed's already impaired, the studies are just gonna make it harder for them. Who else is actually walking the talk about food foresting? I know a lot of people in rural Oklahoma are doing it, but we don't appreciate that, and we should.